This is Teresa.
Teresa, I'm Elt. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
She's our, she's a solid waste planner.
Mr. Sherman, we are live.
Hey, welcome back, everybody. This is the three o'clock workshop with Great West Engineering. Travis will, I guess, turn it over to you and see where we go. There may be a possibility you might slide that mic a little closer so everybody can hear.
Slide over.
Need more mics, I guess.
Good afternoon. My name is Travis Pyle with Great West Engineering. We've been, we were contracted to help out with a rate structure study for Valley County. One of which we completed at least an interim part of that in September of 2021. Work to date has included an initial site visit and analysis of the transfer station up there just to get a sense of some capital improvements you guys might need to have coming up. Also, just a general sense of capacity of that facility. And then we moved into an assessment of rate structure. The main reason we got hired by Gabe and Scott back in 2021 was the idea of some inequities that were occurring, especially in businesses. All businesses were charged the same regardless of the type of business and the amount of trash they were producing. So, we took a look at that. We looked at some other rate structures that are occurring in the state of Idaho and came up with sort of an assessment summary of what that looked like. And the takeaway from that is, in general, your rates are in the middle, kind of ground of what others are charging, but that you don't have a scaling rate on businesses or on commercial multiplex units. So that was, that was something that was obvious and something that you guys knew kind of going into this, that that was probably the idea. And so we were able to get, I want to say forty-eight to fifty businesses, some commercial information from a hauler. And using that and the type of bins and number of bins, size of bins, we came up with what we would assume a volumetric amount of waste that was going into the transfer station every year despite generation in general. And then kind of backed out from there what what they could have been charged based on just sort of a recommended rate structure. And there was indeed some, some major loss of revenue, if you will, to help really, in the long run, help pay for some of your guys' capital improvements that you're going to need to pay for and possibly even new transfer station down the road in order to manage, you know, your garbage safely and environmentally, so.
Did you guys provide us with those numbers?
We did, yeah. So we've got this September twenty twenty one.
I gave them all copies.
Okay, yep.
We have them up here?
Yes, sir.
Here we go.
Should be on top.
Great West right there on the top of it. Doug's keeping it over here, that's why.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, no worries. So let me just take you kind of through some general stuff so you don't have to spend too much time looking through, but. So, the first thing we did, Chairman, is look at the different counties. So we looked at Adams, Boise, Custer, Jem, Idaho, Cooney, Limhi, Teton, and Washington. And we're able to gather that information and take a look at how they're charging residential and commercial accounts. And if you go to like the page four, there's some just summary information there. And you can see kind of base rates and types of rates that they were, they were charging and ranges of rates depending on how they're set up and their structure. So really, some of those.
Kind of in the middle, aren't we?
Yeah, you're, yeah. The Valley County's rates for residents and businesses fall within the middle, upper tier of cost as compared to other counties in Idaho. Those counties in Idaho that have in-county landfills tend to have lower fees. Makes sense, right? The important takeaway for this comparison is the high use of volume-based rate structures that other counties in the state of Idaho are using in comparison to Valley County. And an important part of this is these types of rate structures not only encourage waste recycling and diversion, but also present a fairness in fees and rates. So most of them, other rural counties have basically a rate structure that's set up by virtue of the type of businesses or general type of business that they fall into. And that's set up really on what they think, depending on the level of study, the amount of garbage they're generating a year. And then also considering if that garbage is compacted and non-compacted. Certain companies, I think Tamrec has a compactor, some of the grocery stores have compactors. The density of that garbage is, is two and a half times more than a normal, normal loose garbage that you might pick up at the curb, for example. So there's some inequities there possibly as well, where they're putting a lot more garbage in a smaller space, but being charged by volume or just by virtue of their business and it's three hundred dollars and change a year. Regardless of what they are.
With the volume base, we're not going to pick up that compacted trash. I mean, we're not going to know that extra load, so to speak.
Well, you will because the way, the way you'll set up is you may not care about it because it's, it's either tonnage if you want to charge it by the ton or you're saying, okay, you're a, your grocery store, your rate is four thousand dollars a year. I'm just throwing out, you know, numbers, right? Because you are producing this and we see, you know, so many of those a week. And that's, you know, in comparison to somebody that's got two ninety-five gallon bins out at the curb. That's a coffee shop, for example. So they're charged, you know, equivalent to how much they're producing.
And I think that is really the fairest way to tax anybody, how much you're using the program.
It's utility like anything else. If you have a water.
Issues we had, home businesses that were commercial because their accountant or their hairdresser that paying the same rate as the big commercial guys.
Right.
And it wasn't fair.
I, I completely agree. I guess the way I look at it, Chairman, is if it's a, you know, it's any like any other utility. If it's a water service, you pay by the gallon of water you use. You know, if it's electricity, by the kilowatt hour, right? If it's garbage, it should be by a ton or a volume that you're actually producing.
Well, that brings a kind of interesting question up because, you know, in the county, just as private people, you know, it's all over the board. We recycle. Kind of, or we don't create, we don't create. I watch, I look, go down the street and I see, you know, these things like, look like a take pickup or, you know, skids here to dump them, you know? And we maybe put ours out every once or three weeks. You know, so it happens at that lowest level of this too, but this would probably, I mean, in other words, if you're going to have that service, they have to have a route, they have to have, you know, something to depend on. And if we had to say pickups every three weeks and those people are producing a lot, wouldn't, it wouldn't work. So there's those inequities there just at that level.
Absolutely, there are, there are. And I guess you could get as granular as, as you'd want, right?
Yeah.
I mean, do you have a house with, you know, a single person or do you have a house with?
Ten people.
Ten people in there, you know, that's, that's hard to, and that becomes very granular. I mean, really, at that point, you know, it would be the waste taller, how much they're picking up garbage and or just tonnage rate structure versus volume.
So this will be focused more on the, you know, commercial, really.
It would, I mean. Yeah, I mean, the idea, right? So this is, this is, I have some recommendations in here, but this is really one of two major steps. The next step is that we, there's a decision made on the board on however that needs to come in, whether it's doing now or do it after the financial model, but we need to create a financial model for you so that you can determine really what that rate needs to look like with a structure that is what is agreed upon. So that we can then decide, well, maybe residential public rates can come down a little bit and we would raise the business rates just because of the inequities in order to still pay for things that we have coming down the road here that we know that we got to do. We got to take care of the floor. We got to, we got to repair some building stuff. We need to put push walls in. Just things like that at that transfer station. And there's only so much room you guys have up there. I've been studying this transfer station for probably fourteen years now at different levels. And back, actually, it's been more than that because it was before the downturn in like two thousand seven, eight. I was providing some input and assessment when Tamrec was just getting started and cranking out and there was so much trash that they couldn't keep up with it. And we're looking at expanding that building even back then. This has been a long time thing here, knowing that there's definitely some growing pains out there. And probably not too far in the future, I need for a whole new station or at least a supplemental area where you guys can collect garbage and haul it out of here. So.
Would you?
So Ed, this is not about street side pickup either. This is just tipping fees at the MRF, correct? Or this is the extra MRF fee? It's not about the cans on the curb.
This is the assessment fee.
Yeah, the tax fee. They ta, they're taxed every year.
Special assessment, yes.
Yeah.
So even though, Ed, if you only put yours out every three weeks, this wouldn't impact that at all. That's a separate contract with the gen, with the.
Yeah, but it sounded like, it sounded like in the discussion that we were kind of started out by the inequities that, that some of the property owners and, you know, for that particularly commercial, you know, make some arguments. Or as, I mean, it's all about volume.
Well, that's what it is. I mean, we have the little coffee shop that they pick up for a trash can every week. And you have, Tamrec has three compacters. And that coffee shop is paying the same as Tamrec is for three compacters. So that's the inequity we're trying to balance out.
Well, and one of the good things I can see about doing this is those larger contributors to the MRF may decide they need to recycle more so they can reduce that volume.
Absolutely.
So it's going to create a little incentive on their part to maybe separate the garden or separate the bins or whatever it is.
The cost, the cost of garbage needs to pay for itself start with, but it does need to encourage, you know, a heightened awareness of the whole problem. The garbage don't just go away.
The waste is getting full.
Yeah, it's a.
Yeah, that's definitely a secondary benefit is, is, you know, rate-based by volume, even if it's like, it's basically pay as you throw in some sense. Encouraging diversion and recycling. People are taking another look at it and maybe some of these larger contributors are thinking about more on how much they're producing and, you know. And there may be some assessments on that and then reassessments possibly, but there's going to be, there's going to be quite a bit of heavy lifting coming out of the gate here depending on how far you guys want to take this. And there's really, in this assessment, we talk about kind of two levels. One is just kind of sort of categorizing all the businesses that you have in the valley, right? To ten different categories. Even then, there's inequities because not every garbage or excuse me, not every grocery store is the same. You might have, you know, so you could go and become very granular or you study it more and you have an open ordinance where every business in the hauler have to give the information to the county and there's equivalence in generation. And as those change, if it's a different business, a lot more paperwork, but you get rid of any and all inequities at that point. Because you know exactly what they're throwing away. And it may be seasonal and it's more of an average. They have to maybe bring in a dumpster one, you know, so there's, there are some some caveats with that, but that's generally the most fair you're going to get. But it's going to take that extra effort to get there. So it's really how much you guys want to live to get to where you get to a fairness and, but it's, is whatever's reasonable or more reasonable than it is today.
One person's definition of reasonable is a lot different than another's. My concern being is that we really need Lake Shore to track the data for us. Stuff you got, that Scott got from Lake Shore, did that help? I mean, is it, are they tracking it now or do we need to go in and reamend that contract? We want actual volume measurements data to show what these businesses are doing because if we start out at three or four thousand for a heavy, big commercial user and they decide they're going to recycle, they're, all of a sudden they get better, there's got to be a way that we can adjust, adjust our rate and know for fact that they are reducing.
Absolutely.
Meaning that they're actually reducing.
Yeah, and it encourages, it encourages the hauler too, to better dial in, calibrate to the cans that they're picking up, right? So there's some efficiencies I think that'll come across the board for sure, but yeah, they have, it, it has to be transparent, I think, is what we're hearing right now. But really, on the level of transparency, you know, there's most of the very rural communities, even more rural, I say than you guys, because you're, it's a recreating area. I mean, you guys get a lot of people. They, Cooney County has a very detailed program where it's completely transparent. Every business has a business category and they know based on the hauler and there's multiple haulers in Cooney County, how much they're picking up on average. And if that switches, if the business switches, it's, they know. And that's an ordinance that actually set. What, the challenges we had were to get the data. I know that there's like seven hundred in some accounts and we got forty-eight. Well, I, and that was after a long exhaustive request and back and forth. And I don't know how that relationship is now. I don't want to, I don't want to speculate, but it was very challenging. I know that they didn't want to share from what I heard because they thought it was proprietary information. Because they own it and they want to be the waste hauler here and continue to be the waste hauler here. So I can't judge them on that. I'm just saying what I, what I was given. But if you have an ordinance, for example, and it's required or it's in the contract, it's required that they provide you with every one of the business counts that they have and what they're hauling in terms of frequency and the type of container or even container, then you can have and set up a very detailed equivalence that they're, you know, that these people should be paying on an annual basis and you adjust the rates based on that.
Travis, have you seen our contract with Lake Shore? Have you ever looked at that?
No, but I think you guys just renegotiated, right?
Well, we did a kind of amendment to it to change some, a few things. But I think that's where we got to start and we've got a really awesome civil attorney now that can help us kind of go back through that contract. I think it's good for more years and then where you renew.
It had like seven years on it.
Seven? It's good for seven more years. We would have to amend the one we have now and get Lake Shore to agree to it, but. And I don't know why it's proprietary information.
See, I have a list of their, this is a list of all their, I have four or five pages of commercial.
So you only got forty-five?
That's, that's a list of all their alphabetical order.
Maybe this is something that they provided after.
Yeah, I thought you had, I'm sorry.
No, and I think that there was some back and forth and this might have been sent after from Clerk Miller. But I didn't go into this detail because really, at the end of the day, it was, okay, this is generally what we're seeing. We think this is a representative group of really forty-eight different types of businesses or group of a couple of businesses to give you guys a sense of what this might look like. And in, in, and decide if this is something you guys want to pursue and to what level. So that's great that they're, they're sharing all of this now. And so I agree. I don't know that it is proprietary, but that's, I think, what we heard first.
Yeah, that, that was.
From them.
At the first request, they felt that, you know, that it could hurt them in each negotiations, that information can get out to a competitor. If I, if I'm right, it goes another seven years.
So this would be some, I'm, I'm just thinking about the return on the investment here. So every year, we are going to have to work with Lake Shore to find out what each one of these businesses, how many cans they have or how many dumpsters they have per week. And then they are charged this annual assessment based upon that. So, I mean, why not just do like a large business and a small business? Because we don't have a ton of business up here. We don't have a ton of commercial up here. So I'm just questioning, I could just see the amount of work that it's going to take to try and figure out on individual tax bills, what their actual assessment is.
Yes, you're, you're, you're exactly right. It, it, it would take a lot of effort. And is it, the question is, how much more effort is it? Is it worth the cost to do that?
Three hundred and twenty-five thousand, I would say, yeah, it's worth the cost to do it.
And that's, you know, but I'm extrapolating on what I, the forty-eight.
Just these forty here.
Yeah.
We, if we threw out the whole show together, I'll bet it's closer to a million bucks.
I think that was my projection with the seven hundred accounts based on the forty-eight. I just forecasted out if they were all the same.
No, if you look on page eight, that to me is kind of the answer to our whole concern is that you've got different businesses. There's, they're not all commercial. There's some apartments, there's condos, but look at how much stuff they create a week or twice a week and what we're charging and what they should be charged.
Right.
And the difference is quite a bit.
It is, it is. And so I guess another sort of, I think, consideration is how do you get this information, right? So do you guys know, maybe this is an assessor question or clerk question, is how, do you know on a certain property, a residential property, that there's four units in there?
Oh, yeah, if, if it's a condo or an apartment complex?
You will know that, but if it's a house that's renting and they've converted it.
A lot of that is based on the size of the septic system. If it's a three-bedroom house, you're going to have, what is that, twelve people in that house.
Right.
So that's going to create more trash than a one-bedroom house.
Sure, sure. Yeah, it, it absolutely does. I don't know if we wanted to get to that level because that would be challenging, but what I am saying, and maybe, maybe this is not a big deal because you, maybe you don't have a lot of these, these homes where you have a larger home and you've converted it into four apartments. It's, it's one building on a structure on a lot. And they're being charged right now a hundred and ten dollars versus say they converted that into four apartments, that would be four hundred and forty dollars. That's where there would still be some inequities depending on the level of transparency here. Unless you guys go out and audit everybody or there's some, some, I mean, you guys probably know a lot of these different buildings and who's living where, but.
We have a lot.
But you're right, if it's a condo or an apartment, then you can do it by unit or whatever. So we've set this up into in what I think Cherry's saying is that there's maybe an idea here where we don't go to that full level of Cooney County where you've got data upon data upon data. Because I, I know they had a, they've got a very sophisticated IS, you know, IT group to help them gather all this information and query it. But maybe it's really looking at the categories that I put in here and deciding, do these make sense for us in Valley County, knowing what the businesses are? And, and being able to kind of horse fit those in. And then I guess there could be discussion if they feel like they're not really in that category and they come to you and dispute or whatever, right?
An appeal process for their.
An appeal process, right. Yep.
We, years ago, we had a lot more categories for trash. And it was really hard for the assessor to categorize those to determine that rate. It wasn't based on the actual yards or anything like that. It was just based on the actual structure itself. And we decided this is too complicated. So we kind of grouped everything back together and kind of started over and just did a commercial rate and a residential rate. And we had some super commercial, I guess you might call it. We, we rated differently, but to make it easier for them.
So what I've shown in here, for example, is that we have seven different commercial categories. From small businesses to medium to large and all the way up to these large, large businesses with compactors. And some of which, the latter would be just kind of on a case-by-case basis because there's probably only a handful of those in the entire county that you would have to set up a rate for. And that would just be based on what you we know based on data on how often compactors are coming in and the weight, if they're weighing them on occasion. Or if they're not, there's some calibration checks that could be happening to, to do that. And then you really have two different residential rates. You have a multifamily and you have a single family. And if it's over.
And that's where the short-term rentals come in, Travis? Would be the multifamily rate or how do you do short-term rentals?
It's just a, I would say that that's probably not any different than having full-time resident in, in that property.
It's three and four cans out versus one.
You know, are they mostly rented out on the weekends or are they rented during the week?
I think up here in the summertime, they're all week long. The one that's beside me is twenty-four, seven. They've got four cans instead of one.
Yeah, they obviously going to have more. I mean, because number one, they're going to have more people in there than we, our average household in Valley County.
And they're not going to recycle.
No, and they're not recycling.
Yeah, so that, yes, yeah.
You're talking, you're talking about the Airbnbs like that. You know, I mean, once they turn a house into an Airbnb, is that basically considered a commercial?
It shouldn't become a commercial.
Not yet, but it should be. Yeah, it should be. It's a business and it's no longer a, a, a
Right.
A family residence. It's.
It would be like a commercial one.
And are we, are we charging business on that now? Probably not.
No, they pay a residential fee just like everybody at other houses.
Single fee, yeah, yeah, exactly. I guess it's just a matter of.
To rate them as residential. So it's hard to get that list of where they are and what they're doing. You know, I mean, there may be some larger families up here that might put out extra trash and, you know, I don't, I don't know how Lake Shore determines whether it would be a short-term rental or not, but there should be some discrepancy there between short-term rentals and residential. And I don't know how you clarify that.
I think we need to pull Lake Shore in on this.
Yeah.
For them to tell us, hey, we're, we're doing four cans at this house every week or whatever that rate is, two cans versus this house is only doing one can. We're going to have to get down into that, that smaller data. And I think Lake Shore should be able to provide that fairly easy. And I don't think it's really proprietary, but maybe they don't want somebody to see the end result of how many tons. I think this last year, we were around thirteen thousand tons.
Bills or profits.
And when Tamrec was going crazy, I think it was over thirty thousand ton. Because we're getting a lot of sheet rock and a lot of stuff that was getting thrown off in the snow and it got out of hand there, so. I think our.
That's Tamrec now, sorry.
I think our next step is to make sure we can get Lake Shore involved with this on it to help us get the data. I've had people say, I don't even create half a can a week. Why do I have to be the full amount? You know, grandma has too little. Well, we can't go that far, but.
And then El, do you know before, if you guys broke it down? So I'm sitting here thinking, okay, we get a list of you said seven hundred, you know, you add in the short-term rentals there, you're probably a thousand. Now you've got to do what? Give that to Joanna to put on individual tax bills?
Yes, Commissioner Mopin, yes, first it would go to the assessor, but yes. And there is a report that the treasurer's office would be able to have, would be able to run based on, I guess, a switch of the, by making a notation on their assessments, it will trigger something to go to the treasurer's office to determine what the fees are. Or I, or the treasurer's office, yes, does in fact have to go to each parcel and make a notation of what the fee is. I don't exactly know how it's done.
So it's a manual process some way?
Yes.
And it would have to be adjusted annually?
Well, they would have to cross-reference with Lake Shore. If this residence is kicking in one can a week or four cans a week, then that's a different rate. I mean, we can use the, the, the data to back up the charge. My question, my concern is I don't know if we can get Lake Shore to go along with us on this.
Well, does anybody have equipment that just basically measures volume when you pick up? I mean, volume or weight?
Well, I mean, there are some trucks, I think, that can, can weigh on their like side loaders and stuff. I don't know if they have it, but one, one thing to think about in this discussion too is the hauler, Lake Shore has accounts, but not everybody has an account. They don't, most of them aren't mandatory. They have, right? They're voluntary and a lot of people still probably like to haul their garbage.
I haul my, I haul my own.
To the dump, right? That's what they call it still. So.
Do you still pay the annual?
Yeah, I still pay the annual.
Yeah. So how do you, how do you charge those guys? Because you don't want every one of those guys going across the scale.
That's always been the.
So that's, that's where it gets to a point where it's like, what becomes fair and equitable? You know, with residential. You know, with residential and if there's a way, I, I like the idea of being able to somehow determine. If a house or building is renting multi times a year is maybe being a commercial. I think that's gonna be challenging, cause I don't know how that's even rated with taxes. I mean, it's a tax, it's a tax. Um, because they're producing, potentially producing more garbage. But you get to a point of, you know, return on your investment in time. And I think that's where we have to ask ourselves, what makes most sense for you guys in order to get some fairness? In equity across the board, but not have to spend possibly, you know. Five dollars to, you know, make six dollars or. Yeah, you're just gonna be, or even if you're breaking even, but you're spending all that extra effort, I mean. My, my take on it is if you went to that nth degree in accounting, you're probably gonna need to have somebody in addition to. You know, staff right now, that's, that's what they do. They get new business license, they assess them. They have to talk to Lake Shore and say, okay, what are you setting it up? That's one can, it goes into the system. They come up with an equivalent, incremental equivalent, that's what they get charged. And every year they have to assess and see where they are, because businesses change on that property. It's not just property based anymore, it's property and business type.
One reason why we, Travis, we kind of went to just a general average fee, is we didn't have to deal with that. Well, Scott, when you take your trash up to the dump, do they charge you by the yard?
Oh, cause see, household trash is free. So, and so are the stuff when I think with Lake Shore comes across, cause it's. You know, they make their money charging the people, but it, it gets dumped, you know.
They, basically they just make their money with the routes and number of people they have. You know?
It gets dumped on the floor and then we, you know, use that money that we've collected off the taxes to pay Lake Shore. To haul it to Clay Peak or Adams County is, is what it's, is what it's done. The only things are, you know, like the mixed trash and other things, household trash, no matter what, is free. All these people are honest about it.
It seemed to me like we couldn't, with all the, you know, the garbage issues around the nation, we're certainly not reinventing the wheel here. We need to have some model, there's gotta be a model that basically works and fits for out Valley County. And the idea would be, in my opinion, you have some goals here. And a goal, have one of the goals has to be fairness to start with. But also having people take a look at what they're doing. It's like if you're buying fuel and it's five dollars and something a gallon right now, you're probably gonna kind of think a little bit more about what you drive. What you do. If you, if you get a same price to dump a couple of different big overflowing deals. Of garbage and then you don't consider recycling, you don't consider, doesn't matter, it only costs, all costs the same. So these other cities have to be taking, doing some of that.
Absolutely, they are. And especially in Idaho, I think it, you know, it's. It's hard to compare, we do a lot of solid waste management planning, we're doing right now for Spokane County. That's just a different animal compared to you guys, right? So you're right on, we, it's about what works for you and what fits for you. And really how much time and money you want to invest in it to be, to get to this, what you think is a reasonable level of, of fairness.
And volume, or, you know.
The incentive will come with it, the diversion will come with it, you know. Those markets fortunately are turning around, so you're not having to subsidize, subsidize those as much. That could be a negative thing, because now they're going there and they're gonna eventually end up in, you're paying more to recycle than if you just put it in the transfer station right now. That's a whole different topic of discussion. But so, yeah, I think it's a matter of what you think works for you. And I, I kind of lay out some ideas here and there's a whole laundry list of what other people are doing and maybe you guys take a little time and say, yeah, that makes sense to me. Um, you know, maybe we don't need seven commercial categories, maybe we need five, because it's just, it's gonna be too much. Cause I don't know what the assessor and the treasurer, how much they would want to take on with this, or they would want to say, hey. This, let's hire somebody part time just to manage this for us. It's reasonable, cause we think we're gonna get, you know, in order of a few hundred thousand or more a year, just by virtue of. These forcing these, these into more categories and groups.
Well, my goal, I guess, is to make sure that the people that are creating the most volume are paying for the service. I mean, that to me makes sense.
That's where the fairness comes.
Me, it's almost like if we could, if we knew how many yards everybody was creating every week, it'd be easy to do, but it's never consistent. You could do it by the yard and, and you, you count on Lake Shore to kind of keep track of that for you, and I think we. That's why it kind of came back to the counties years ago to know we're gonna do that function, because they're gonna get paid whether the can's full or empty. So.
It's just their routes, like you said.
Where do we go from here?
And it'd be interesting to see too, like I'm looking at these seven Travis, and the, the biggest one is. Um, eight dumpsters or more is thirty-two fifty. I mean, how many people up here use eight dumpsters? That seems like that's a large category.
Yeah, so we, not, not a lot, not a lot, um, we kind of laid that out. I think there might have been a few, but I think you're right. I mean, most of them are much smaller than that, and maybe that's a category that we can take out. It's maybe six or more or something like that to just, to just generalize more.
And I think, you know, we could break this down into three or four categories and make it pretty easy. I mean, it's, it's. Individual is this, and I think in my opinion, that's a fee that's one of the higher ones. And then the commercial is if you're using a, you know, a can, a dumpster or over six dumpsters. Or something like that, and, and just make it easier. The hard, the more complex, the harder it is to manage it in a manual process.
Yeah, no, you're right on, yeah, that's the hard part in. The, the one thing is that we don't have, not all dumpsters are the same size. We have two yards, we have four yards, we have six yards. Sometimes they're picked up once a week, sometimes they're picked up twice a week. So that's where it's hard to track on what, if it's just based on one dumpster or two dumpsters, because it then becomes frequency too. And that's where you have to get into the data, you know, and, and they're all over. There isn't a standardized dumpster size. And pickup frequency that they're doing, the hauler's doing right now.
The one thing.
Residential and small, medium and large, because if, then we could categorize them small, medium and large, not based on a specific dumpster size. And then if they felt we were wrong, then they could come in for a variance or, you know, to. Sway us differently, but.
Everything gets weighed, I mean, in other words, every, every truck that comes in there, doesn't Scott, they get.
Not everything gets weighed.
Everything gets weighed.
Not everything does.
No, it doesn't?
Household is free, so. It, it gets weighed when it gets hauled off. The thing of it is, um. Doing the small, medium, large, I mean, I think it'd be easy to assign a value to. Two yard, six yard, eight yard compactor, you've got two, two yards, so this is what you get. You have an eight yard, this is what you, you have three compacters, this is what you get. Um, and, and do it that way and the frequency is, you know, is. You just gotta, yeah, across the board, it's what.
I like Travis, I like, actually you kind of Sherry's idea, going to commercial number five. We're dropping six and seven off, because we do have two more rates for the residential on that, and that would give us seven rates. And anything over six dumpsters a week is.
We have to have a category for compactors. Shore Lodge, Whitetail, we've got compactors out there.
I mean, you could drop off, I mean, I guess what we want to try to, when I was kind of going through this. Process, I was thinking, well, we want to make sure we're taking care of the small businesses. Because right now there's such inequity with them. And so I was thinking just a couple cans on maybe these coffee shops and stuff makes sense. So I think we need to have that lower range and maybe there's some grouping in maybe the middle range here. And then it's the bigger compactors over a certain amount is a different rate. And I think it's almost because there's, I don't know, what are four or five of these? It's compactors that are businesses.
Tamarack has three, um, you have Albertson's has one, Ridley's has one, Shore Lodge has one, Whitetail has one. Um, there, there's a number of compactors out there, and that's just. You see the most often.
But they're not all the same, so we'd have to get an idea of what, what that weight is and how often they're coming and then we can. I mean, it's easy to say, hey, go across the scale, go across the scale, you get it five times, at least three, we can take an average. And they're dumping on average several times a, a week over the year, there's your rate. And it's based on, you know, a household rate, I don't know if you want to give a discount of however that looks for you guys, but. Um, but then at least you know the information and there's an ac- actual algorithm calculation. In which you can back and say, this is what we know, this is the weight, this is the time, this is total volume a year, and that's your, that's what you've been charged.
Scott, when those compactors come in, that's specific to that business. Lake Shore doesn't go out and pick up three different compactors and bring it across the scale?
I mean, only one goes for a truck, I mean, it, it, it's, it's, it's a single pickup and, and the girl. And that's one of the things we could do, we could have the girls start collecting, okay, cause they know where the compactors come from. Okay, so let's, um, every compactor that comes in for the next two, three months, we're gonna weigh it. You know, cause they know and then collect that information, you know, everyone that comes from Tamarack gets measured for three months, whatever, you know. Um, something like they say the ones come from Shore Lodge are never totally full or something, um.
That was my concern is, we're gonna start charging, this is gonna be dumped on your girls for a lot of this data.
And we don't, you know, it's not really, there's no program set up, this is all gonna have to be manually collected.
Well, they'd have a check off sheet basically, right?
And stuff, but, uh, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, Scott, this is like the little, down by Rio, there's a little. Um, cafe there or something, you know, he says their trash can over a week is never hardly even full, you know, and, um. So, but you know, the compactors getting this, they're the ones that kind of bother me, they're getting this ride. You know, Albertson's is paying three hundred and fifty dollars or three hundred and thirty a year.
Yeah, for a huge amount, huge amount.
And, you know, Tamarack's, you know, bringing three, they don't come, you know, every, all three come every month, but.
I think we just need to recognize it's gonna be expensive the first year, whatever we set up, it's a manual process. We're gonna have to put that process in place and pay for that privilege. So if we're gonna make enough money out of it, then I suppose it's worth doing it. But it could be an addition to the county employees, because I, I think it's gonna take somebody some time to manage this.
Yeah, cause, but we, we gotta do something with, with them, you know, it's like it's add. I, I know it seems simplistic just to assign a value to them and charge them for that, you know, um, on what size they have. I don't want any more complicated than it has to be, you know. We've gotta do something about it.
Yeah, you.
We know seven hundred, sorry, go ahead.
The end game of this study is to make sure that we can provide a MRF. That is appropriate for the amount of trash we have at the end of the day. Because right now we do, we received quite a lot of funding to take care of that transfer site. I know that we're trying to get to an equitable situation, but the goal at the end of the day is to be able to run that transfer site. And plan for the future. So we've got to make sure that whatever that return on the investment is, is worth it, so that we're adding to that bottom line to. You know, plan for that future, and if it's a different site. Tyler, we've got a hundred acres up there or something like that, so I'm hearing you say a different site.
But it's not very flat.
Yeah, it's, it's, um.
We've used about all the flat ground that can be used up there. Just configuration with the gullies and everything else.
Yeah, there's, there's, we, we, we did some of those studies, I think I actually shared when I was with my former firm. Back in, I mean, this is fourteen plus years ago, we looked at some concepts and. One of which is to put scales down below and then just make better use of that top bench area. Um, but that's where it kind of comes down, is that you, it's, it's planning for the future, and if you guys have a financial model that says. This, these are our rates, this is our rate structure, we're going to increase these every three to five years, just on virtue of inflation and everything else. And you're setting money aside for your future improvements, capital improvements, you've got a plan. And, you know, without a plan, you're running amok, right? I mean, we don't. You, you have a lot of money coming in, but is it, is it coming in enough in order for you to do what you need to do in the future? And I don't know that I can answer that based on what I've seen so far.
Well, we're kind of running out of time. I think what I'm gonna do is talk to Lake Shore and see if we have an easier access to that data. If they can get us more up to date.
I think like, say, what I have here, um, the cat, you know, they listed all the properties, their yardage, how frequently. It's kind of hard to understand, I don't think I have quite all the categories on it.
And I think that's all business, isn't it?
Yeah, these are all businesses.
So that's like the seven hundred and change businesses, which was really more of, um. The emphasis was really we need to look at the inequities that we know are out there with the businesses, cause there's such different size and. And level, now, you know, you guys can pay us to go through and create what we did for the forty-eight for the seven hundred. And we could come up with that list and you'll have a much better idea on the business size side of things. And the categories in which we're talking about, which may make more sense. The other side is the residential that you're talking about and how granular you want to go with those in terms of. What they're doing on the property or not. And that may, I think you may find real quick that that's not common and it's gonna be really hard. Determine if you can find somebody, it's an Airbnb or they're, you know, they've got multifamilies in. You know, in one single unit just because of virtue of cost of living, they've got, you know, extended families there. Should they be charged more? Cause they're still in the same house? Well, probably they're producing more garbage, but that's hard to really.
Oh, you, that's hard one to nail down.
It's a hard one, and unless you have all of that accounting and records, it's gonna be hard.
Maybe one area in this county where we could focus a little bit of attention there though is, um, short term rentals.
Also, I mean, do the Airbnbs have to set up as a business and register with the state, so would, or, or do they have to come to county and get an actual business license? Say we are, uh, you know.
Short answer to that is no, right now, we're trying to get them registered, just so we know who we are, I know that. McCall has over six hundred of them right now, just in the city.
We are trying to get them registered as businesses.
Make them licensed and, and, you know, then that would.
That way we at least know who they are. So Scott, what's your feeling? Do you want to send it back to Travis and his company and let him do the whole commercial category and rate amount? Or do you want to do that yourself?
I think they're better equipped to do it than I am.
I would propose that we go with, uh, with Travis's group, cause they, they, like you say.
Let's race and need something to do.
Absolutely. I agree, we need something too to, if we're gonna increase fees that far for a commercial business, we need the data behind it. And hiring a professional firm gives us that.
I think occurring with that though, what you're saying too, Scott, is that really focusing also on those, those compacted ways. And maybe that's something staff out there can start working on right away. And I mean, honestly, it's probably very seasonal. And there may be a gut feeling, unless you guys study this for an entire year, and even then things change. But there's probably an idea that, you know, during, you know, July and August, we see three Tamaracks, but in, you know. November or, I don't know, during the mud season, right? April, we only see one. But let's average it out and then let's see what we think is fair, and if they want to come back with data to prove otherwise. That's gonna happen, but at least we have some basis to come up with a fee rate schedule that's. At least at first glimpse is fair.
I think with tracking all of that, providing, uh, coming up with a spreadsheet or something to kind of track the date and where it's from. That way we can easily extrapolate that data and really compile it.
That should be pretty easy to just work off as it coming in.
And I think, I think, well, uh, Tamarack and these places are, are trying to not have that seasonal, you know, they're in the summer, they're using. You know, the mountain bikes and stuff on the ski slopes and then try and keep a more steady flow through there, so, um.
I would guess they have a lot more people in the wark time than they do the summertime.
They're having, yeah, they've been having concerts and stuff out there and things, they're, they're trying.
You're surprised.
Yeah.
They're starting to balance that summer.
Yeah, they're, like, it's, they're, they're trying to do it, so it's steady twelve months out of the year, instead of slammed in the winter with a skier and everything, and in the summer. So, I think it, the, the flow is, is evening it out.
So, you got your marching orders? We wait to hear from you, and when you're ready with this stuff, come back.
So, just to summarize real quick, Chairman, so I understand, we'll, we'll get the, those accounts that we have, we're gonna. Basically, take the data that we had already done for the forty-eight businesses. You'll go ahead and start gathering some data on what you guys can do.
We'll see if we can gather on the compactors.
Yep.
Uh, size and frequency and, uh.
Scott, do you have this in, in the little format?
I think we do, I think I got it from Clerk Miller at one point.
Okay, that'll be what he's gonna work with.
Circle back around, Chairman, we can drop those in. And then, are we still looking at any of the residential stuff, or is that something you're gonna investigate? Chairman, on what we, what you can get from.
I think we should wait on the residential until we can get rentals, Airbnbs on a registry.
And then they become commercial with fairness.
Well, that's, no, because the legislature won't even let you take them to commercial, you can't rate them as commercial. Legislature is very protective of Airbnbs.
Okay.
And so, it's more of a volunteer system right now. Me, I would rather work on the commercial stuff first, and let's get that nailed down and done, then maybe we can come back and look at the residential. My feeling, what do you guys want to do?
Well, yeah, I, I kind, I kind of agree with you from a logical standpoint, but I don't want to get, I, I don't want to dismiss. Idea that this, particularly in the summer month, that, that, uh. Commercial, short-term rental, is probably has a huge impact in this county on a garbage system. Well, they do, they come up and it's not their place, and you, you look in Airbnb after weekend, and I mean, you get dumpsters out there overflowing.
Yeah. And so, maybe we need to kind of at least work from Aryan to try to figure out where you get those listed. I mean, they've got to be in, whether the, you know, from a state standpoint of not calling them commercial, that's fine. But it is a different use, it is a, it is special use.
Oh, it is, absolutely.
And, uh, so, if we can, maybe we'll categorize that as a special use as opposed to, you know, categorizing not a commercial. Yeah, I mean.
Family and, and, you know, sort of, whatever that.
With their own, their own category, you know, maybe. And then, we gotta move on, I'm sorry, but we're out of time.
Yep, appreciate your guys' time.
Thank you. And, um, send this to us a week ahead, so we can read the next. Hey, our next agenda item is an action item, this is review and accept a request for qualifications for. Master Facilities Plan and Account Plan Financial, Comprehensive Financial Plan. I'm not sure where this is coming from, so, this one to you, Sherry?
Mr. Chairman, this was.
Who's?
Doug's.
Oh. All right.
And Mr. Chairman, we only received one, uh, request for qualifications from Clearwater Financial, I just emailed that to you. At approximately one thirty-three PM today.
Do you want to wait and go out and see if there's any others?
I checked with my office, Mr. Chairman, we do not have any others that have been submitted to us.
And this is a good firm, I would, I would want to just move forward.
How come this thing won't work?
Today, what we're. I think what we're, we're just scheduling, we're reviewing the RFQs that were received, uh, the commissioners would approve the RFQs. We're not entering into any type of agreement, but I think at this point in time, if the, if the commissioners were. Uh, inclined to make a motion, it would be just to accept the RFQ that was, that was submitted to the clerk's office.
Explain that, because my computer won't let me look at it, well, maybe, try it again, nope, something went wrong, you said.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's all right, um, I would agree with Doug, uh, the clerk, on the recommendation, but also. That we schedule a time for this company to come up and present to us. What the master financial plan and comprehensive financial plan might look like, before we enter into any agreement. We only received the one RFQ, so I think that we should at least move forward with that, and that would, um. Help you get a better understanding of what was exactly contained in the RFQ that we did receive.
Good idea, Joanna.
Yeah.
Well, do you want me to try and save this as a, well, let's see, it's in a PDF, so.
I'm looking at it right now.
Oh, Ed.
Well, I don't know, I, I've got his email here, and it's right here, but it just won't let me, this, it won't let me open it up, so, I'll, I'll work on it. Back and see what I'm hooked up to here. So, it's. Six thousand retainer for both plans, each plan. Monthly retainer of twenty-five hundred dollars.
Thank you.
An hour rate of two hundred dollars an hour. And the estimated hours for the master plan is about a hundred and fifty hours.
This is something that will help us in the future.
So.
Be able to plan for, uh, it's a financial plan and, and our capital improvement, so instead of going out and deciding we need a new building. This will actually tell us how and why and how big. I mean, it's, I, as coming from the business world, I would very much like to do something like this.
This is gonna be about sixty thousand.
So.
Plans.
Sherry, I'm hearing from you that you have personal knowledge of this company and. A pro, feeling of comfort, working with them moving forward on this.
Cam and Ariel's been around a long time. In the banking world, Zion's Bank is the one that does almost all bonding and, and that type of thing. And, yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with him, he's been around a long time.
Yeah.
So, is there any need to, to postpone a decision on whether or not to use them for this, Mr. Chairman? No, no, no. I've known Cameron.
Want to meet him, though, and hear what the plan is, or what their process is.
I think that would be important for the commissioners to, to have, uh.
Yeah.
Clearwater Financial come up and do a presentation, and I know that they would be willing to, I feel that they probably would be willing to do that.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that'd be good.
And I've known Cameron since probably about ten years now.
So, if you want, this is an action item, I mean, we could do an action item to move forward with the RFP and ask the. Uh, presenter to come to Valley County and give us. An overview of what the project would look like, and what the achievement would hope to be.
That, that, was that a motion?
Sure.
Okay, I'll second that. Hey, but moved and seconded, any more discussion? Um, just one quick question before we go, Doug, where are we gonna fund this out of?
Uh, at this point in time, that has not been determined, we would probably budget for it for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
That was my question, is if we could get a budget and start this next fiscal year.
This is not something that we are planning on doing right now, it'd be something that we would be. Uh, if the commissioners wanted to pursue this, we would be budgeting for it for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Perfect, perfect, so we got a motion to second all favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. And I'm assuming you or Doug will notify them?
My cell for Mr. Fort will, um.
Okay, or Joanna would, okay, good. And we got about two more minutes before we have a public hearing, so we take a quick break and then we'll get started. Decision.
I can probably.
I will have to take Commissioner Mopin off, um.
Never mind, we'll, we'll get through it.
Yes, we can, we can.
We'll just do it the old-fashioned way with paper.
Yeah, absolutely, we can, I can have Commissioner Mopin call in if you'd like.
I can do that, just watch on YouTube, I'm fine with that.
Tell me, Cindy, it's a matter of quick.
Um, I, I think, Jim. Appellant, are you gonna want to see the plat on the screen, so you can talk about locations and things?
Presented exhibit shows right away and your house, question? Yes, I would like.
Yeah, um, it might be best if we could get up, get that exhibit up, so everyone knows where we're at.
So, exhibit was the maps, is that what, that you sent us?
Yes.
Doug, if you just want to call my cell again?
That's what I'll do, I, I just, well, I don't know.
The only thing is, I can't hear very well from the table. But that's fine, we can try it.
You're gonna pull it up from that computer, Cindy, or?
I can, unless you want to.
If we could do it from that computer, that would be a lot easier for me, if you don't mind.
Sure.
And then Commissioner Mopin call you, let me call you, see if this.
You want my number?
Got it.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, can you turn off your?
I'm trying to get there. Okay, we okay now?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect.
Cindy, what date did you send us that? Send us this.
June sixth.
There it is. No, this is the facts and conclusions.
Sherry, do you know when I sent that email? For this plat?
I think it's like the sixth or something like that.
June sixth.
Is it under Gabby's agenda?
No, no, it's in the Senate separately, CUP twenty-two oh five.
You sent that June, June the ninth, she sent that June the ninth exhibit, but she sent the other stuff on June the sixth. You have a hard copy there, Cindy, I should turn this thing, I don't know where it goes.
I'll send it to you now.
Doug did, I got it. Got it. Okay, today we're here, and this is an action item, this is a public hearing on appeal of. P and Z approval of conditional use from the twenty-two oh five Gold Fork Reserve. Um, the way this public hearing is gonna work is I'll open it up. I'll ask if any of the commissioners have any ex parte or conflict of interest, we'll take a staff report from Cindy. And then we get a presentation from the appellant. And then we get a presentation from the applicant. Take testimony of the public in person. Um, those that are proponents, those are uncommitted, or those are opponents of the appeal. A rebuttal by the applicant, a rebuttal by the appellant, and then we have questions for both, and I'll close the hearing and we'll. Deliberate, hopefully make a decision today. But this time, Doug, we'll start the public hearing at four, four. And at this time, I'll ask the two commissioners if they have any ex parte or conflict of interest.
I do not.
I do not.
And I do not either, so at this time, we will get a staff report from Cindy.
Okay, so the staff report for the appeal of P and Z Commission approval of CUP twenty-two oh five Gold Fork Reserve. The appellant is Edith Sweet. The applicant is Landmark Pacific Investors LLC, the owner is Estates eighty-one LLC. Representative is Jim Frog with James Frog Consulting. Uh, Landmark Pacific Investors LLC is requesting a conditional use permit for a twenty-eight. Lot, single-family subdivision on eighty acres. proposal includes an additional six open space lots, proposed lot size ranges from one point two acres to two point nine nine acres. And due to the six open space lots, the density is one unit per approximately three acres. Individual wells and individual septic systems are proposed, access would be from private roads at one access point onto Gold Fork Road, which is a public road. Sure driveways are proposed, road right of way for Gold Fork Road would be dedicated to Valley County. But lands and easements are shown on the plat. Planning and zoning commission approved CUP twenty-two oh five Gold Fork Reserve and preliminary plat. At a properly noted as public hearing on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. An appeal was received in a timely manner, manner, on April twenty-five, with the appropriate fees. The reason for the appeal, the appellant is unclear of the location of the road easement. If the road is widened, it will be detrimental to the appellant's property, septic system, and existing setback of the home from the road. Approval of less lots would reduce the need to widen Gold Fork Road. Staff response, the appellant placed a septic drain filled in the fifty-foot, uh, public road prescriptive easement. She's concerned that if there's additional traffic, the county may want to widen the road. The road superintendent had commented to me that if the road is widened, it would go in the other direction towards the east. Due to the drop-off of the west side of the road, we need to give them an easement for the drain filled, um, and I think we should work on getting that done. Um, legal notice was posted in the Star News on May nineteenth and May twenty-sixth. Eventually affected agencies were notified on April twenty-second, property owners within three hundred feet of the property line. As well as people who previously commented were notified by fact sheets sent May eleventh, and the site was posted May twenty-sixth. Everything was also placed on the Valley County website on May tenth. Facts of conclusions, attached to the facts of conclusions that were approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, the board of county commissioners is tasked with deliberation decision to come to a reasoned statement. Um, and that will be placed in writing and presented to you for approval at later date. The following are the conclusions from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Post use is in harmony with the general purpose of the Valley County organizations and policies. And will not be otherwise detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare. Post use is consistent with the Valley County Comprehensive Plan. Valley County must follow the laws of the state of Idaho and the Valley County Code. Valley County has one mixed-use zone that promotes mitigation of potential impact. Post use is compatible with surrounding land uses, the sheriff's office monitors speed limit compliance. Valley County has a high rate of second homeownership, approximately seventy-eight percent. Impacts of traffic can be mitigated through cooperation with the road department. Lots are large enough to not need a central water system and to allow individual septic systems. Relevant portions of the minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. That was held March tenth and April fourteenth were attached for year review. Planning and Zoning Commission staff report was also attached for year review. Agency comments received. I'm not going to read through these, because these were all received and entered into the record at the P and Z level.
Okay.
Unless you want me to read all through all those. And then, neighbor comments received at the P and Z Commission and Board of County Commissioners level, um. Shane Harris. Hang on just a second, I think all of these were in the record also, it's April fourteenth. Oh, no, here Shane, Shane Harris, owner of 80 acres directly adjacent to the north and west of the proposed subdivision of 550 Gold Fork Road agrees with the appellant that unless the road is widened, less lots in the proposed subdivision would be more appropriate, the cattle guard shall also be widened or replaced. He agrees with the appellant, with the appellant that widening the road would be detrimental to her property as she is very close to the cattle guard and narrow Gold Fork Road. As for fewer and larger lots that would reduce the amount of traffic and perhaps avoid having to widen the existing road. Edith Sweet, Virgil Tucker, and Julie Tucker, owners and appellants at 595 Gold Fork Road, say that the 28 lots is too many for the Dry Mountain to sustain. There was another comment from Shane Harris, which was exhibit five in the P&amp;Z commission meeting, as from, as same from Julie Tucker. Since the staff report was completed, we received additional correspondence. One's a letter from Frank Maynard at 598 Gold Fork Road. He approves of the appeal. 28 lots ranging from 1.2 to 3 acres is a significant increase to the Gold Fork Road, which is a single-lane dirt road with some turnouts. Many of the residents could potentially be full-time residents, technology affords many people like himself to work full-time from a remote location. You can see this site from Highway 55. And then, um, yeah, we asked that you consider how, want to plan and preserve what can clearly be seen from Highway 55. We also received exhibit number two, which is a sewage system installation permit for the appellant. And it's, it's just the sewage permit. The applicant submitted this, and I will let them address it if they want to bring that further into the record. And then, we received a copy of the plat. Um, exhibit three, and I will also let the applicant talk to that. Because to me, it looks like the preliminary plat that was submitted. If you'd like, I could get a copy of the GIS up here, which really shows the location. And the floodplain and the road. This area in here, this is the milk can subdivision. And then over here is the Elk Meadows River Ranches subdivision, all of the shaded area, shaded area. And the appellant's property is located here. What they're talking about is her property, this little piece of property here goes across the road. But I believe her septic system is located down in this area. Just her drain field. This milk can subdivision provided a 70-foot right-of-way through here. And then, subdivision is here, it was previously platted as Winchester subdivision years ago, but it was never completed.
So.
Here's the floodplain, huh?
On the road, we, we actually own that road, we have a, what, 70-foot?
Um, the, the portions that have previously been platted, we have a 70-foot right-of-way. The other portions that have not gone through a plating process, there's a 50-foot prescriptive.
How's that, how's that apply to this one?
That's 25 feet from center. To this subdivision, they're going to give us the 70 feet. They will plot a 70-foot right-of-way.
They're gonna take it on the north side of the road.
North side? What, it's suggested yet?
They're going to center that 70-foot right-of-way. Oh, from about this point, through this property. So there'll be a 70-foot right-of-way dedicated to the public through here.
Okay.
All of this property on this side will be open space.
What about in front of Edith's house?
This is a, this milk can subdivision. That's the right-of-way that they had ownership of here. This is all prescriptive here, and this is prescriptive here. Until you, and this subdivision will be plating that. Edith owns the, there'll be a piece here that is still prescriptive through Edith's property. And it's a 50-foot prescriptive.
And that will not change?
Not until it's dedicated.
Yeah, okay.
And then the, this is located where you can actually come down Davis Creek here, across the bridge, where you could head north and go up, up Farm to Market towards the top.
So, Cindy, the blue is the floodplain?
Yeah, that's the floodplain. And they aren't doing anything of the floodplain, everything on that side of the road will be in open space.
Let's go. Hey, any more questions for Cindy? I'm sure there'll be some later on.
And are there any connecting roads in there at all? I noticed that this is a one-end road, I mean, there's just one access onto Gold Fork. Are there any ways to plan for future access points, to have multiple access points in there? I will have you, the applicant, address that, I asked them that myself, and they have a response. I think it has to do with the steep topography where the property connects with the adjoining properties. The property to the east has other access points coming off of Gold Fork Road. Here has a road coming out through it. The piece to the north is the Eld Ranch.
So, another, another question, yes, Cindy, that always comes to mind, did this, you know, this, um, all get addressed? Was there any new information here that wasn't addressed with the planning and zoning when they were making this decision?
No.
Okay.
No, planning and zoning, um, mission, um, you know, their conclusions are, I mean, 78% of lots, you know, our second homeownership, it's not going to create that much more, um, traffic, was their conclusion. But they believe based upon what the Valley County Road Superintendent said, it was an adequate road. Um, but he does want them to replace the cattle guard.
Yeah, he did mention the cattle guard, but that, was that agreed to in the, uh, condition?
The condition is that they have to enter into a road development agreement, which will include that.
Yeah, okay. Cindy, while you're there, could you zoom back in on Edith's property? I wanna see how much of her property is not in the floodplain.
I'm sorry?
So her house is in the floodplain? Yeah.
Her house is right here.
That green, is that her house?
Right, it's her house, it's, it's a half of a modular, right here.
So it's just barely off the edge of the floodplain?
Yes, um, that's her house. As it says, it's just, it's half, I believe.
Hey, any more questions for Cindy? At this time, we have a presentation from the appellant. Edith, would you like to come up to the mic, please? Don't worry, we don't bite.
No, we.
I'm Julie Tucker, 1-8981 Malt Road, Caldwell. Um, this is my mom's property, and I do have some handouts. I know that. Sealed a bit better.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Julie, and you can leave them right here in the middle for a few more.
Do you mind giving one to the?
Oh, sure.
Applicant, please?
So.
Our, our premise is that.
Can you please pull that microphone right around you now?
And speak up so we can really hear you.
Okay, can you hear me better? Okay, okay. Um, as you can see, um, my mom's property sits very close to the road. To her front door is, to the edge of the road, to the, her front door is 34 feet. Just to, 10 feet from the edge of the road is her drain field. And we were very fortunate to be able to talk to Jeff McFadden, who agreed that to widen the road on her side would be detrimental to her property. She has no other place to go for the septic system, period. And so, he has suggested that we do somehow record, maybe perhaps with an easement, as Cindy has indicated, to be able to not have the road widened on her side of the road, on her side of the property. The, the reason that's important is because it would make her property worth nothing. It would just be a campsite. Um, granted, it's been there since 1992, the septic system, and the house has been there longer than that, but, and my mom has owned it for over 20 years. But in the same token, um, we understand that there's a 15-foot right-of-way given by the Wilks brother on the other side of her property, for a subdivision, and 15-foot given on the other side of her property from the appellant, from, I mean, from the gentlemen that are applying. And so, for her, she doesn't have 15 feet to give on her side. And so, Jeff McFadden has suggested that, um, when we, when and if you guys ever decide to widen the road, that it would be able to be widened on a milk can subdivision side. Which would mean, though, that they would have to buy an additional 15 feet off of milk can subdivision to widen the road. Um, I don't.
That being the, no?
No, no, he, he suggested the county. He said the county will have to, he says at this point in time, he says if that road gets widened, we, it would have to be on the milk can subdivision, another 15 feet. Milk can subdivision has already given 15 feet on their subdivision. It would have to be an additional 15 feet of milk can. So the reason being, we thought, it, that there's a sign on the property, on the road, that says, "Single lane with turnouts." Now, there are three or four subdivisions on that road that are less than 14 lots, that, NY 28 has been approved, we're not sure. Even, uh, Mr. Roberts, who we spoke to, gave it a minus one. He said, "We're, we're, we're allowing a subdivision to go in with no infrastructure. We're having to put the road in after we need it." And so, but, the majority ruled that said that the subdivision should go in. We're just asking, and we know we can't dictate what subdivisions go in. The development's going to happen, and we're not against development, we truly aren't. We're just hoping that it won't be detrimental to every subdivision that's along there. Because Mr. Wilks is on one side, and this gentleman on the other, my mother's property is going, that road is going to be widened. You can't put 28 lots with two cars each, with 50 cars additional on that road, and expect it to not be widened in the future. You just can't. And so, that's the reason that we appealed, that and the septic system. We were just hoping to save her septic system because she has no other alternative. She can't go in the floodplain, she has no other place to go. And I've got other subdivisions, but, um, Cindy has mentioned, like Elk Creek, is 14 lots. Um, even the Gold Fork, the, the, on Coskella Road and, and Davis Creek Road, Mr. Wilks has only gotten two to three acre lots, and I think there's five or six lots there. So see, to, to go such a dense lots on this property is, is a detriment to everybody, including the taxpayer.
In order to clear this in my mind, then, your, your concern is, number one, we don't, you know, dilate, you know, the septic system by moving the road out from both sides.
Right.
And the other one is that you, you're arguing that they're too dense.
Right.
But so, we're talking about, let's see, if we had a, if we want 10 lots less, it's, I don't know what, some traffic.
Right.
But in any case, we'd have to probably gonna have to deal with the road, right?
Right.
Uh, you know, was that, there had to be a discussion in the planning stage of this, planning zoning stage.
Um, the, the size of this, they didn't think it was dense lots because they, because of the amount of open space they were plating.
Oh, okay.
Um, I mean, their dwelling units per acre were one per approximately three acres.
Yeah, so what I'm trying to get at is.
What they've done is they've clustered the lots and, and left open space.
Yeah, so all I'm getting at is the, um, the impact of the infrastructure there, would it make any difference from one way or another, from standpoint of numbers of lots? And then, two, it sounds like that we would probably end up having to buy right-of-way there to accommodate the subdivision, is that correct?
That's what the appellant is saying, that is not what Jeff told me.
Oh, okay.
What he told me, which is very in line with what Julie is saying, is that they wouldn't expand the road
To her side, yeah.
This direction, they'll expand the road to the other section, which milk can has already given right-of-way.
Oh.
If you look up here.
So then the road really isn't an issue, expanding the road? He's got enough?
Just have to expand it to the other side. This piece, if you look up here, I've drawn this out, that's 29.6 feet from here over to where that right-of-way is.
Mm-hmm.
And, and no, this isn't perfect. Um, the only thing is, what Jeff had talked about was making sure that we memorialize her drain field or septic system. With maybe a, uh, permission from her to make sure, because they own this over here, this little triangle that they can't do anything with, is that we will only expand to this side of the road. As long as they agree to give us the right-of-way over here.
So really, just it's a matter of kind of semantics of how we deal with future road expansion? We need to memorialize it in the plan?
If we, if we agree to expand that, leave their septic and drain field alone, that they'll allow us to, taking the expansion on this side, on the north side. That's, that's the conversation.
So the argument of density kind of gets, well, and almost.
Well, well, no, because everybody has two cars, everybody, you know, and so if you put 28 lots, even at two cars, you're over 50 cars a day. And so, it's, it's gonna happen, it's just gonna happen. And so, the climate is changing, there's a lot more people living year-round. And so, it, when, all we're asking for is to, to be able to down the size of the subdivision to maybe lessen the impact on that road.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
Okay, what we're looking for is just to down the impact on that road with less lots of that subdivision. We're not asking for the subdivision to be quashed. We, we know it should, they, they have their rights to do that, and we're not against that. We're just saying that 28 is a lot.
I have no further questions there as far as, until I conclude.
Okay, now I got my mom.
Cindy, do we know where the replacement drain field is? We don't want a replacement drain field coming even further into our easement. I guess that, yeah, the replacement is just south of the existing one and just north of the driveway. and just north of the driveway.
Show us on there Cindy.
It's the last page of the sewage system installation permits. According to this...
And I do see that, but unfortunately, I mean, it was calling for the drain field originally to be ten feet off the existing road right-of-way. So, it's not going towards the road according to this map. So I think we just need to memorialize that also, that no future drain field will be placed into a county easement.
And Jeff's thought was that if we memorialize not expanding the road this direction in exchange for this piece over here, so if they ever have to widen the road, we can move it this direction.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
My comment on the, so the density issue. I came from farm ground. I came from large lots, and all they became were weed fields. And I have concerns with large lots that, you know, especially when they're not usually owner-occupied. I understand your concerns with the number of traffic. But on the flip side of that, we've got a noxious weed problem in Valley County, and four acres is very difficult to deal with. So it, and that just makes it difficult to make a great decision because there's pros and cons on both sides of the conversation.
I appreciate hearing the rest of the argument, Chair, and then we can get back into that personally because I, yeah. Okay, any more questions for the appellant? If not, we'll move on to Jim. You wanna come on up from the applicant?
Okay, I think...
Edith, come on up, get as close to that mic as you can, please.
I'm Edith Sweet, and I live down Caldwell. And I own the property at five nine-five Gold Fork Road. And it's been developed for many years. And we, we are only part-time up here. We enjoy every bit of it. But, we pasture cattle up here and have for many years. But instead of packing a trailer up, we got a chance at buying this little mobile home, or manufactured home anyway. And it, we thought we were doing all right until all of a sudden, we've got it from all sides. Wilk brothers came in and, and they said, well, their survey said that part of our land was theirs and, but, we agreed on the fence, and so that worked. And then, they decided on subdivision, and that was extra road given, as well as this new subdivision is extra road given. And all of a sudden, we're squeezed. And I know that if there were more homes, that there's more travel on the road. And eventually, it'll have, it, it can pass two cars because over the years of use and grading, two cars can meet each other, in most places anyway. I've not seen anything else. But, to widen it for oil or whatever comes in the future, we've got trouble. And so, we're worried about it, and we thought now is the time to kind of get it straightened out. We know there's people needing homes, and we're not against that. It's just that we feel if there were a little larger homes, there'd be less cars. Because we have subdivisions going in in Canyon County that, life is changing, especially for me. I'm getting old and I don't understand about kids not, I mean, there's FedEx and UPS and Amazon and garbage trucks going in and out all the time. Well, those trucks will be on this road too. And twenty-eight places with twenty-eight more places for them, people to live is gonna eventually, that road's gonna be a problem for us. We wanted to talk about it now. We just thought maybe if they were, they were able to still recover what they, their projected income is off of this subdivision, that they still can get it with larger lots for people that will have more pride. And it's not for workers especially because they, these little hideaways, they haven't got much time for those. They, they work up here in Valley County. And so, I think it'd be better for homes that would be more prideful in their little hideaways and, and we don't object to them. If it isn't that subdivision, there'll be another one down the line. We can see it coming. But I just wanted to say, we, we just are worried about our, our place.
You need, you need to protect, as I understand it, protect your septic and all that kind of stuff. You need to have that, the road needs to be accommodating for that.
Yes, if we can. Because our place that we bought is floodplain for the most part. And we don't build down, we didn't build down there. The well is down there, but our house and our septic is up, and our parking is right up on the hill with the road. So this is why we're causing a problem. Because we see a problem for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Edith. Okay, now it's Jim's turn.
Thank you, Mrs. Sweet. My name is Jim Franch and I live at 14028 Norwood Road. I'm with James Franch Consulting. First off, the applicant and I have, understand the situation that Mrs. Sweet is in and appreciate her concerns, and I think we can work around it. We have the open space along the southern side of the road. It's not all in floodplain, it definitely has a lot of wetlands in it. But I think there may be some opportunities in the future. If you ever needed a backup field, you may be able to run down the road, and they're willing to grant an easement for that. If that ever became, we don't mind memorializing that in the plat, it's just a neighborly thing to do. Because she is in a tight, she's on that ledge, and she's right there where the cattle guard is, so that narrows down. So, as part of the development agreement, we understand that we're giving both sides of the right-of-way to meet seventy, which doesn't really affect this appeal. But, doing so, I want, of course, I've been looking at this from the various aspects of this appeal. The road on average is about twenty-two feet wide, it narrows down in front of her place because of the cattle guard. Uphill side to the north has a borrowed ditch, but it's kind of at the high point where it's shedding both ways. There's a culvert goes across because there's a, some springs that are captured and run across the road. But from a constructability of moving to the north with any future road improvements to meet the county standard, I don't see any problem with that from my standpoint of design, looking at that. So, I'm not sure what more to say about that. As far as our application, just to kind of give you the mindset of what we're doing, we're eighty acres. I've spent a considerable amount of time on there, and if you know my work, I try to look at the land as the land and how it lays. So, the way these lots are laid out is taking into account the topography. And then, where most of the open space is, of course, across the river, where we wanted to provide that as an amenity, not only for the subdivision, but whoever else wants to go down there, you know, camp out, but it's an access point. As far as where you see the open spaces, what happens is you have the rise of the hill that's, I won't say it, it's moderately steep. Would you like me to pause?
If you could, my apologies, Mr. Franch.
I think we lost our other commission.
Yeah, that's right, I have to answer one of her questions too, so...
Might be your benefit.
Yeah, might be. Where did you drop off at?
She can hear you, so just keep it on.
Oh, okay. So, where I was at with the topography, to the, to the east, we have moderately sloping hills, and you can see how we tried to accomplish that with the larger lots. The open space are following draws that are coming, the natural contours are allowing these draws to be open into open space for wildlife corridors, and then just giving some open space to the, to this project. I think it's the right thing to do, rather than just making the normal cookie cutter-type The, we're in the process of going through with the Health District, we're just about ready to receive our approvals for the septic system. There's no issue there. And as far as this, to answer your question, Commissioner, on average, these are three acres, some bigger, some smaller lots, with the open space anywhere from six to seven and a half acres plus. The previous owner of this cattle ranch did an excellent job of maintaining the existing vegetation out there, as long as the forestry process. If you look at our fire management plan, he makes note of that. There's some, some of these ravines do have some undergrowth that need to be taken out, and that's part of our plan. Just because they, it wasn't worth them going in there for the logging, for whatever reason, they just didn't take it. So, we will take care of that. So, the H A will cover the whole site. We, management is definitely one of the high points on this. There's not any, not any, but there's, it's a good stand of grass that's left there. So, right now, the noxious weeds are not an issue. We plan to keep it that way. The envelopes for the houses are put on this preliminary plat to show where they're at, the intention of the design guidelines, and the HOA documents are to spot build. You know, we have to bring, we have to build these driveways, we have to come in, we don't want to go outside of those corridors. And then the houses themselves, we want to keep it natural around them, of course, with fire-wise protection around these dwellings. But, we, the intent is to have the construction just around the building pads that are predetermined on, on the plat. Because, because of the lay of the land, we don't want them just thrashing about. So it's, it's gonna be spot construction. So that should help us on not tracking a bunch of, or ripping up some ground to let some other noxious weeds come in. This is a very nice property. As far, as far as being viewed from the highway, you can't see this from the highway, you can see above it, you can see the, Mr. Maynard's house that's up higher behind us to the east that pokes through. But, you can't really see it from there because the way the hill slopes and, to the north and south, there's a big group of trees that block that, so you can't see that. You know, as far as density goes, we thought we were being responsible of twenty-eight. And we tried not to, you know, you can see the road corridor coming up, the logging trail, we're following most of that to just go where it was, you know, they did it for a reason that way. So we're kind of following the lay of the land without trying to rip it up. So, there's some beautiful heritage trees in there, and by that I mean they're multi-stem big old ponderosas that are just huge. All of those are gonna be protected. So, with that, I stand for questions.
I don't have any questions, anybody else? No, I'm just trying to sort out my mind, the real issue then, I believe you've answered pretty much, that the road thing, and there's, it definitely can be worked with. Possibility of an easement for, you know, backup septic on that property.
They have a backup septic, but then again, you know, who knows? So, there's no guarantees, I can't, I don't have any test wells out there, but there is a bench, there is some stuff that's upland. We're willing to look at it if that ever becomes a...
When you do the road agreement, it'll issue take issue, that cattle guard possibly even improve that.
The way we understood it, you know, is the road agreement and the fees. But associated with that, we were, we were, our responsibility is to replace the guard and make it wider at that spot.
So it'll open the road and make it more travel.
Yeah, but with the guard, we'd have to go to the north, not to the south.
Jim, is it still grazed? Is it gonna be grazed afterwards?
Um, no, it won't be grazed, it's not being grazed right now. You know, it's an open range, I think, in that area, so I don't, I don't know if a cattle guard is gonna be...
Is there any cattle on the Gold Fork?
I, I can tell you that I've seen cows in the road. I don't know if it came from this property. This, last year, there were cows on it, I don't know if they came in because the fence was open or whatever. You know how sometimes cows just show up, so. So I don't know where they're, where I saw those and where they're coming from, so. I don't, I don't know if a cattle guard is worth...
Going into the future, there may not need the cattle guard.
Well, I mean, you look at what's going on further up towards Davis Creek and that, my, my observations of the road, you know, two cars can pass on that easily. In fact, the applicant was driving by one day and they had, the appellant had, must have had a family reunion because his cars were parked on the road and we were easily able to get by on one side with room to spare. So, you know, and we understand that it's just changed, and believe me, I know, after living here that long, I get it, so.
Hey, is there some more questions?
Can we go back to traffic flow in that area? There's no way to connect to any existing subdivisions or...
Oh, well, I forgot about that question, Commissioner. As you can see that where the road, yeah, thanks for reminding me. Where the road ends is on a, on a ridge, and then it goes to the, to the north, it goes down a gully. And, and then it goes back up and rises. If you were to go straight where the road is curving right before that point, send it to the right. There's a logging road that follows that ridge, contours around, but it's not, you can't make it work to any standard because the slope down and up from it, going to the L property doesn't work. So, yeah, we looked at that, and it just, the topography really doesn't lend itself to that. As far as, you know, we have fire approval, of course, and, and we've accounted for that with our fire mitigation plans. But, I really don't see an opportunity of going anywhere further. Even if you were going down the ridge to, across the property to the north and west, it kind of just dives on the L's property, it just goes straight down. You know, there's that lake down there. You know, that, and that flat area that moves up that hill is a part of a glacial moraine that comes across there. And knowing what I've done in that area and across the Gold Fork, it was just flat and hard by the glaciers that came through there, it's really tight, tight soils, so I don't... You know, the subdivision to the west that goes up in there, I don't know how many units they have, I think she mentioned fifteen, but, you know, that road goes through and almost ties to one of the first subdivisions off of Baker Barker Road some time ago that I did. Yeah, so I just don't...
We'd just like to keep, especially as an engineer, in the back of your mind, you know, eventually, we need to try and connect some of these things so that we don't have one access point.
Well, I'm with you on that. Every one of my projects, Commissioner, every one of my projects, I look at that opportunity because it, it doesn't, you know, it's not a detriment really to the client because it could mean something future to the other side, fire, potential land acquisition. If you looked at Black Hawk on the lake, the one I did there, you know, there's two connecting points for future work that I did, so. So I get it.
Okay, any more questions for the applicant? We're gonna move on? We're going to move on? Guess not. At this time, we're going to open up testimony.
Thanks, Jim.
Is there any proponents of this appeal? Any testimony proponents of the appeal? Please let the record show there is none. Testimony of uncommitted. Please let the record show there is none. And any testimony of opponents of this appeal? Please let the record show there is none. Do either one of you want to rebut back or say anything? Please come to the mic. Actually, we're supposed to do the applicant first, but you can go first and then we'll let the applicant.
Julie Tucker, again. To memorialize a septic system from my mom's property would indicate that we'd need some sort of legal description. To be able to get a legal description, we need a survey. I have spoken to the surveyor for this project. And it would be between $1,500 and $2,000 to survey off her, her septic system area. Would it be appropriate to ask the gentleman who are doing the subdivision to stand that cost?
Honestly, I don't think that's appropriate, but we could certainly ask him and see what they say.
To memorialize it, we need a legal description. To get a legal description, you have to have a legal survey.
I think, Julie, that it's asking quite a bit, but we can ask him, we'll see what the applicant says.
Thank you.
So, Jim, you want to come up and answer that question?
Give me a moment, moment.
Sure.
We're also going to want to park me on the other side from her little piece.
From her corner, yeah, that's got to come back in.
I don't know that, just an opinion, I don't know that we would need, if we just said can expand to this side as a memorialization or some sort, just if they can't come to integrate.
That would, yeah, if they, if they just don't do anything to that side, they already have a septic and a backup or a. Let's see what the applicant says.
Okay. I have to say, after all these years, I haven't really been asked to do the survey for the other side, especially when they're appealing. But what the applicants have suggested they would do is they would split the cost.
Very good.
With them, and we can work that into our final plat, which of course you'll see at some time, not being on the plat itself, but while we're out there, we can certainly.
The road development agreement is where the applicant.
Road development. Okay, Julie, will that work for you? They'll split it with you. Very nice, very nice, thank you. Okay, we have any more questions for the appellant or the applicant? Sure, are you still on?
I am.
Oh, good. Any questions for the appellant or the applicant?
No, sir.
If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back, Doug will close it at 4:53, 52, something like that. And we'll bring it back for deliberations. What's your pleasure? I think with the recent events of splitting the cost of the survey for your backup septic system, I think that's a nice thing they've done for you. I think with the road development agreements and the, the understanding that your piece of ground on the north side of the road is going to come to the county for widening that road, I think we got all the issues solved. Cindy's going to write down all those conditions and put it all together for us. So I'm going to make a motion that we deny the appeal. I will second that. It's been moved to second it, any more discussion? The discussion will be just basically that I agree with you that we, I think we kind of at least tried to compromise a little bit on both sides there, and I appreciate the discussion, but it's hard to, tough one. Well, what I, I like most about this process are multi-use processes that allows this to happen. Yeah, whereas most places that it's zoned and the door slammed shut on any kind of mediation, negotiation. Now, I think that's what makes it so great up here, is we can settle our differences. Okay, we got a motion and a second to deny the appeal. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you guys for coming in, good luck on your development. And Julie, let us know if there's any issues or concerns, and we'll be behind you. Yes?
Just for information, I would like to say that this is one of those projects that actually took our clustering recommendation into account and made the smaller lots with 20 acres of open space, nine acres of right of way, and that's why they have the smaller lots.
Yeah.
This is an example of clustering. As you see, the open space is right along Gold Fork Road and then along those northern property boundaries to protect those ranches that were concerned about impacts to their operations and things like that.
I think this is a nice looking development.
Yeah.
I guess my only comment would have been a nice minute doing loop driveway. So we had ingress and egress, but looking at the topography, you'd have to come right down through the bottom of it would have ruined it with the road, so I think it looks great.
Thanks. We're looking to try to get it around.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, okay, we have enough time to do the rest of this today? Yeah, our last agenda item today is McCall area impact discussion decision. This is an action item, so I'll turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I know.
Can you hear me again?
Yes, ma'am.
I know it's been a long day for all of you, so I, I really.
Um, Doug, I can't hear.
Can you hear me now? Hello?
Let me try and get back on.
Still no, no volume?
She should be able to join again.
Can you hear us now?
She's not, she's, she hasn't joined back.
That's right, you look pretty good on TV.
No, I'd prefer not to be.
Who's that Santa Claus up in the corner there?
Oh, my God, somebody's going to have to change his looks. Can you hear us now?
There we go, now I can hear.
Okay.
Okay, so I put this, I, I put this on the agenda about, well, before I'd heard that you were, you were learning more about and addressing issues with the area of impact, the letter of the, the proposed letter, the draft letter that I had sent around for your consideration, maybe, it may be better to just hold off on that until we get some additional information. I did reach out to Senator Lakey to find out, to just get some more information about the work group that he's planning. And, and I think the content of the letter from this board to the city of McCall can be improved by getting some feedback or some additional information on that. So I certainly am okay holding this over until a date in the future where we can, we can get a little bit more information about what the rules of the road are going to look like or the areas of impact going forward. In, in the meantime, there has been quite a bit of questions about, you know, where, where do we go from here with, and I, and I would, I, I think it's fair to say some confusion about who, who's responsible for the area of impact, how we're going to resolve getting, kind of getting, getting this thing moving, moving in the right direction, so. Until we do get a letter that we can communicate to the city of McCall and even the other two cities, Donnelley and Cascade, what the intentions are of the county with the area of impact, it'd be good to get some guidance from the board on how, how you would want us to handle those questions. I know Cindy gets many of those questions, but I get some of them from time to time as well. So I'm, I'm seeking your input. But you're on the spot here, you don't need to answer now, but send us an email on, on how, what the message needs to be. One of the issues of concern, you heard from Brian Parker when he was here presenting the latest amendment that the city of McCall was proposing for, for their ordinance, which would, he was asking you to, to amend the county's ordinance to include that. Waiting a year is, is a long time to kind of be in this, in this this unknown area, I guess. So if there is a way to proceed forward, I, I certainly would recommend that the agreement that we have in place should still be the agreement that's in place. I am a little bit concerned about additional ordinances being added to the, the area of impact without doing this tenure, 10-year review. But anyway, I'm just giving you a little bit of food for thought. But as far as the action item goes, if, if, if you would, if it would be the will of the board and, and this is the direction you want to go, just hold this over for a future meeting until we can get some additional information. Then I can amend the letter, re-present that to you for your consideration, and then we can finalize it and send it off.
Go ahead. What are, what are we talking about time, next week possibly, or?
I, well, I, I sent an email to the senator, I haven't heard back. I'm hoping that I will here before next week, and if I do, then I can amend the letter and put this back on the agenda for reconsideration next Tuesday. But that is kind of out of my hands.
That's perfect. I guess my only feeling is that I don't want us to sit here and wait for something to happen in Idaho legislature. Next winter, we can't wait that long, so I, I realize we're kind of under the ordinance we have now. But I still think we need to do the 10-year analysis and move forward on our side, because it may not get approved.
Yeah.
Or it may, but if you have information from Todd coming down the road next week or the next few days, then I think it's worth waiting to hear that and then we can proceed.
Uh.
I, I think we should table it for today and get it back on for next week.
Commissioners, there is a matter on the agenda for next week, I don't know if this is the same thing, but it says discussion on tool for impact area, area of critical concern.
Yeah.
That's what.
That is not the same, Doug.
It's not the same.
No, that's a declarat, we have a standing ordinance that we could declare the Cougar Island area.
Okay, we'll leave that matter and then for 3:30. We'll have to squeeze this in at some point in time.
Ryan, the only thing you might help us with is, you know, I mean, if there was anything in that latest, you know, catch up, there were some concerns that I had on the short-term rental ordinance as being lawful. I mean, if there's something specific that you feel like you would be concerned with being able to represent, that would be something maybe we should hold on those specific items and go ahead and move forward with the rest of their amendment change.
Okay. Uh, I'm guessing you're, you are asking about any future ordinances that I may have legal concerns about that I could alert the board to those and, and advise you accordingly in, in the future, but then, I mean, if they're, I, every ordinance is going, every ordinance at this point in time is going to have a legal concern because we are tardy in getting the 10-year review done. But there could be additional legal concerns about takings or anything of that nature that, you know, McCall works through their city attorney to resolve those issues, and I don't really have a seat at the table for, you know, for those discussions. But nevertheless, I think it's a good point and it's maybe a way that we can accommodate some of the issues with McCall's wanting to continue to do business as, as we previously agreed.
Well, I, I, you know, I think we're on the right track, we've got to do this and do it right. I guess the thing that's always been in the back of my mind is that because of the Payette Water and Sewer meetings that we had this spring, they don't ever plan on annexing any of this ground. I have a really hard time even leaving it in the impact area.
Yeah.
Is one of these people actually gaining?
And I had a large conversation with Todd Lakey about what reasonable time meant. And he said, you know, I mean, that, that really is open to our interpretation, and they are going to take a look at that in this new legislative ordinance, but he says five years, 10 years? And so it's not 50 years for certain.
No.
And his clarity, I think, that's coming, that he had talked about was, I said, well, okay, what if we're offering, you know, sheriff in, in the impact area, and he goes, no, if you are going to have an impact area that you are using city code, you need to be offering all the services, sewer, water, everything.
Right, that's what I understood.
Yeah.
Those are the things that make it nice for us to now clear that up. So then, I guess for ease of time, I'm just going to go ahead and make, we don't need a motion to postpone, I'm just going to postpone this until next available meeting.
Okay.
That work? That work to everybody?
Works for me.
Perfect.
Hey, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, we do have one individual who wanted to present to the commissioners during the opportunity for general public to present to the commissioners. Mr. Jim Lasky is on teams at this point in time.
Jim, can you hear us?
Uh, yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yep, yep, go ahead, sir, you're up.
Thank you very much, commissioners, my name's Jim Lasky, I am the current Lacy for the, the Big Stone House on Cougar Island. My family and I have been the Lacy of that, this is, this will be our 10th summer there. And the reason I'd like to address you is based on the letter you sent on May 9, 2020 to the State Department of Lands. In that letter, you ask that the state pause on the auction of the entire island with, because of various concerns for water quality and what have you, which I am totally on board with and agree with you guys on. I've been working with the United Payette Group to try to keep the, well, first of all, I've, I've had my parcel in the voluntary auction cycle, the V A P O, since 2020. And so I've had, filled out the paperwork, had the appraisals and whatever, three times now, or this will be the third time. So I've been trying to purchase the land underneath my lease site so that me and my family can maintain the house. We, I have two kids who are teenagers and we've got tons of memories there and we're, we want to keep that. We pay lots of good taxes to Valley County to, for the services we get, I guess, from the sheriff. But anyways, we, it's a special place to me and my family, and it's a very unique place that I don't think is, it is, I don't know, it's a unique place that needs a unique owner, and I feel like we fit it and have been good stewards of it for a long time. And what I'm asking is that you guys would consider in your presentation to the state, or to the Board of Land Commissioners next week to not object to them auctioning off just my lot through the V A P O process. I think doing that, in my opinion, will actually be best for preserving the island in its present state. It'll give the United Payette People the opportunity to continue to fundraise and try to get the rest of it. And it will keep some person from coming in from out of town and trying to buy the whole island, so I think it works in everybody's interest. Because it splits up the one lot that does have a permitted septic on it. So that's, that's my request, I do, I would hope you could consider that. You know, I live in Idaho, I've, I've lived in Idaho for the last 25 years, I'm a local, and all I want to do is try to own my house. And I, I think it would help if you guys could just sort of tweak your letter a tiny bit to say we oppose the, the auction of the four lots, but you're not opposed to the V A P O going forward.
Hey, any questions for Mr. Lasko? Yes, Mr. Lasko, you can understand, and you, you've heard all the arguments, I'm sure, about the island and needing to preserve it and keep it in some sort of public domain. How can you, you know, if we, if we add, tell the governor or whatever, the land board is.
How can you, you know, if we, if we add, tell the governor or whatever, the land board to sell this, you, one lot, they've already prepared, it sounds like, and I, I'm sure that can be changed, but they probably prepared the packet. As I understand, it was five lots and/or one buyer for the entire island. And so that would mean they would be basically asking them to change that, just drop everything except sell one property at this particular time. And then the next question I have, how can you, how can you help, uh, help with the long-term preservation of the island? I mean, is that, is that of interest to you to not have four neighbors there?
Well, okay, so on the first, your first question, I've been working with the state significantly to keep my lot in the BAFO. And I think that they can go forward with just my lot as part of the auction and not do the four other lots in the whole auction. And I think that is just a matter of paperwork for them to do, because under their system, there are different types of lots. The BAFO, I have to fill out a bunch of paperwork completed, they have all that stuff. Then there, they call them their unleased lots auction, which is what they did over in Pilgrim Cove last fall. And they treat those sort of differently, so it's easier for them to do that. This is a unique situation because they're trying to combine them all and think that they'll get a better price for all of them. But then again, I think we do a better job if they get split up. The likelihood of somebody coming in and buying four as a developer is a lot less than somebody trying to come in as buying the whole island. The second question with respect to what I want with the island, I've been working with this United Payette Group since January to try to join in a bid for it, and I'm more than willing to work with them. As a matter of fact, I just got off a phone call with that group right now to continue to commit to do a cross-easement over the property where I would say that there wouldn't be any change in zoning or development of the lot I have in exchange for that sort of a cross-easement, and then they would not develop the other lots either. So we've been working on that, that sort of a cross-conservation easement, and I'm still game to go forward with that. I think the real concern most people have is that somebody tries to turn it into a commercial operation or something like that. The septic constraints are going to keep anybody from really building a bigger house on my lot or changing what's there already very much at all, anyway.
So if I understand this, you're, you're kind of thinking along the lines of, well, we could, on your protected property, have some easement against future expansion. But then, and then the other thought is, is, and, you know, how, what do we do with those other four lots? Is we have to kind of come up with some way with maybe the remainder of the island. And it seems like that's a concern in McCall area. We don't want to further degrade, for instance, the ambiance of the lake, you know, the water quality possibilities, the various things like that. So how do we satisfy the state in their mandated requirements to make a profit off of their endowment lands?
Well, they'll, they will certainly make a profit off of my lot if they acquire it at the price that's appraised for right now. And they seem to be at least listening. These, I mean, they had a group of people out last Tuesday out on the island looking at it, and they are looking to, at least from my understanding, obviously I'm not from the state, but I was out there with them, and they're looking to verify that there isn't septic ability and that they're, they may not be actually valid building lots, so. And in, in doing that, if that's the conclusion they come to, obviously that's not going to increase their value.
Hey, any more questions for Mr. Lasko?
I, I appreciate the discussion, Mr. Lasko. It's just tough to sit here and say, well, we're going, you know, promise anything. We just have to go ahead and move forward. And you're asking us to drop our request for a hold on the sale. And at least from my standpoint, I was looking at, I want to look at a good, long futuristic plan for that island. I don't imagine your property is going to go away. It's just that, you know, that we wanted to kind of maybe look at that long-term, what's going to happen there in the future for the next hundred or two or three hundred years. So, you know, preserving that, that area, so, yeah, it's a.
Well, if I might just add, in, if, to the extent you're not willing to say, hey, this guy's got a BAFO and out of fairness, he should be able to purchase his lot just like anybody else who has a cabin like that. I would hope that going forward in a long-term, as a long-term solution, that you would include me as part of the conversation because I'm probably the most impacted person. And while my main residence isn't in Valley County, I am a Valley County taxpayer, and I feel like I'm at least owed the respect of being incorporated and included in those conversations as the leaseholder.
I appreciate that. Okay, thank you, sir.
And I have talked to United Payette, and, you know, we discussed Jim's project moving forward, and the United Payette is in favor of going ahead and allowing that sale to occur. And just trying to split these two things, you know, if we can get a hold on the other four lots, what your guys' thought on me making a comment that, you know, we would go ahead and withdraw our request to hold on Jim's property?
Well, that's a discussion that I think maybe it'd be good for us to have, Sherry, very soon, and work with that one in.
You know, the problem is that it's next Monday or next Tuesday morning, so this is our last meeting together.
Well, my, I haven't said much. My personal feeling is I don't think the island should ever be developed. I think that the existing residents that's on there now should be either donated to parks, to state parks, and they can use it as a rental to raise income for the parks.
Or an operational center or something like that.
And, but Cougar Island is a big part of Payette Lake, and it's just, to me, it doesn't make sense to put people out on the middle of the lake where you're trying to protect your water quality and your, your aesthetics. And this is, to me, is a very special piece of ground that should never have been developed.
And I, I think that goes back to the original deal with state, that's what they did, they rented properties. But it is a lease, and they determined they did place a term, a term limit on that. And I don't know, at this point, I'm kind of inclined to go with, or allow that to be determined at the state level. Ours is only, our, I guess, comments of that is just, the first, just a recommendation from the county standpoint, and it'll be thrown in with everything else that they've got to consider. And I think probably just the long-term consideration of the island as a value to Valley County and the area is the thing they're going to hear the most, and they're going to probably work through that to try to figure out how to work with all other, you know, peculiarities of it.
So, anything else?
Are you asking me?
Not from anybody. It's been a long day, it's time to go home.
This is Jim Lasky, anyway, Jim Lasky, not Lasko, but Lasky, and I, I, I think it's disappointing that that's your position. And, you know, that home has been there, it's sort of an iconic part of the lake. And, you know, if, if that was the vision for the lake, it should never have been built on in the first place.
I agree with you a hundred percent. Okay, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Lask.
All right, guys, I will be there next Tuesday in the morning, because I'll be in Boise, but I will try and get back as quickly as I can, so.
Okay, thank you, Sherry. This meeting is adjourned.